Open up the council workshop meeting. We'll skip right to the proclamation. The proclamation recognizing national crime victims' rights will be done at an outside event. Next is the proclamation recognizing March for Our Lives.
So does some of the students from March for Our Lives want to come up? And Mark, do you want to come up? Okay.
Guys, come on up.
That time, read them.
Can we add this to the agenda? Alright, never mind. Okay, so the city of Asbury Park wants to present well this proclamation to the community in order to support people who are pulling it together in a relatively short period of time. Whereas gun violence is a pervasive and persistent problem leading no community or group of people in scale. Whereas there are both preschool and school aged youth in the community, more than 2,500 who are involved in either public or private schools in Asbury Park. The safety of all Asbury Park school students is a concern of the highest consequence, and all citizens should unite in ensuring all schools throughout the city are safe. Whereas March for Our Lives is a movement dedicated to the student-led activism, brought activism born out of Parkland, Florida tragedy around putting an end to mass shootings in our schools. And whereas approximately 34,000 Americans are killed by gun violence in the U.S. every year, among them are members from our community who have been sensibly murdered by firearms. Courageous students, teachers, and families participated in both local and national efforts in Washington, D.C. on Saturday, March 4th to demand action to reduce gun violence in our community's safety nation. It is especially important that the students and teachers in the city and across the nation be guaranteed a healthy, calm, and secure environment, and all children should feel safe and secure in their classrooms and deserve all the protections we can provide to ensure their safety. Whereas it will take all of us politicians, law enforcement, school officials, and citizens working together to enact sensible policies to prevent gun violence, recognizing that we must come together to end senseless violence and save lives for present and future generations in Asbury Park. Whereas the proposed Bill Stop School Violence Act of 2018 is headed in the right direction by providing resources to take the next steps in protecting our children. And whereas we must honor and honor the activists and voters, citizens who have graciously given their time and effort to demand steps to ensure the safety of these students. Now therefore, the result that Mayor John Moore and the county council hereby acknowledge the presence of local students and citizens who dare to dream of and advocate for safer communities and schools for themselves and future generations.
I just want to say thank you to the council of Asbury Park for giving this to us, and Mark, you've been telling about him, so thank you very much. And thank you to everyone that helped vote to help it. If you guys could say something.
So why don't you guys get your flag and all stuff.
Next. Next. Next on the agenda is the city manager's report on issues raised at prior meeting.
I know.
I was trying to get to you. Alicia, you're up for special events.
Good evening, mayor and council. First on the agenda is the guest annual beach cleanup to be held on May 5th. Next is March for Babies on Sunday, May 6th. The Board of Ed would like to hold a fun in the park at Springwood Park on May 12th. Charity King's Annual Family Day would be held at Donald Henry Courts on May 26th. Turning the Tide, Celebrating the Ocean would be held on various dates through the months of July and August on Second Avenue Beach. Last two applications are from Madison Marquette for the fireworks on the beach and bonfires. And lastly, we have a wedding on May 12th on First Avenue Beach. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is a presentation by TEDx Asbury Park.
Hello. Thank you to the council for giving us the time to present today. Thank you. I'm Jenna Gaudio, and I'm the editorial director of TEDx Asbury Park. For those of you that don't know what TED is, it's a 30-year-old organization that showcases public figures sharing big ideas around the world at live events, and then they publish these talks online so that anyone worldwide can learn and educate themselves on all different kinds of ideas and open their mind. TEDx is a smaller division that's locally driven that talks about community, things that matter to the community specifically. TEDx Asbury Park specifically is driven by 75 local volunteers. You know, everyone has a story, and I personally think that, you know, no one has a better story than Asbury Park. And we were formerly known as TEDx Navasink, but we moved it to Asbury Park last year. It's really helped us thrive. We are now one of the largest and highest-rated TEDx divisions on the East Coast. We're really proud to showcase stories both locally and nationally. We divide the stage, they share the stage of local stories that may not have a platform to share their ideas and their perspective otherwise. One of the speakers that we actually have this year, Felicia Simmons, she went through the process of doing one of our live auditions, and will be featured at open rehearsal, which are free events to the community. And then she will also be showcased at our live event on May 19th to talk about the community and how her story relates to our theme this year, which is passion. I think we all could agree that Asbury Park is built on passion, and that's why we think it's a great topic to showcase, you know, the brilliant and resilient community that is the people of Asbury Park, and that's really why we've thrived. The stories that are shared and the topics that are discussed help us grow as a community. We partner with different education institutions. We have student volunteers. We partner with different colleges and high schools locally. And we also are supported by over 40 partners, including businesses, innovators, and local eateries that all want to be involved and support the mission of giving the voice of Asbury Park a platform. You know, we're here today to ask respectfully to be formally recognized on May 19th as TEDx Asbury Park Day, and we hope that everybody will be there on May 19th.
I think you guys do an amazing job in not only the event that you put on, but also just bringing a wide range of people into Asbury Park who gets to experience Asbury Park, who maybe otherwise wouldn't have come. And of course, we're going to do a proclamation.
Resolution.
A resolution.
They were on tonight, resolution, naming that day your day.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, too.
Okay. This will move on to review of agenda for tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Resolution 2018-142 is a special event application approval. Resolution 2018-143 is an appointment to the City of Asbury Park Green Team. Resolution 2018-144 is a cancellation of a tax sale certificate that was accidentally sold. We had to lean and went accidentally through the tax sale process, but that just has to be reversed. Resolutions 145 and 146 are RCA awards. And Resolution 2018-147 is the alcohol beverage control license for sixth-year enterprises, and any questions there should be directed to the city clerk. So before moving on to individuals, are there any questions on the set? Individual resolutions. Resolution 2018-137 is a resolution of the mayor and council to grant the conceptual approval for amendments to the Asbury Lanes project on Lot 4104, Lot 9, which is commonly referred to as 209 Fourth Avenue in referral to the Asbury Park Planning Board. This is a referral to the planning board for conceptual approval that what I Star is proposing on the lanes is in conformance with the waterfront plan. Resolution 148 is bills, improvement of bills. Resolution 2018-149 is...
Hold on one second. We're pulling 138, right?
Yes. Well, I'm going by the most current.
Yeah, you're right. He's going by the...
I don't have a 138 on my agenda. Thank you.
On my original. Okay, well, I don't have to revolve. Okay, but 138 being pulled. Thank you.
Resolution 149 is a reappointment of Cindy A. Dyson, the position municipal clerk in establishing a tenure. Resolution 150 is authorizing the change order number five for Springwood Avenue Park. This is the final change order. It has the adducks and deducts and the 2% retainage in the amount. Resolution 151 is authorizing change order number seven for the Springwood Avenue Park Professional Services. This is for suburban consulting to design the sunshade. The way the resolution is awarded, if awarded, will get a new estimate of the cost, and if there is enough money, we move forward with design. If not, we come back to you guys and say, this is what has to happen next. Resolution 2018-152, staff is recommending tabling that so we can provide some a little bit more classification. And Resolution 2018-153 is TEDx Day for the city.
Hold on one second. Okay, that's got to be two hands, right? Okay. You want to go on?
That's it. So this one is second reading of ordinances. Second reading is the municipal budget cap, which is a requirement for the city. This is where, if you remember the example, if we don't, if our budget's $100, we spend 98, we can bank the $2 for the next year. This is what the cap is. And that is on for second reading tonight. That is it. For the introduction of ordinances, there's three tonight. 2018-15 is the amendments to the waterfront redevelopment plan, and 2018-20 is the special assessment as part of the lot-by-lot development. We are recommending that these be introduced and adopted tonight. Staff will not put on for second reading until additional documents are complete, including the infrastructure component report, the updates to the master developer agreement, and the application for subsequent developer. Additionally, once 2018-15 is introduced, it begins another advertising where we have to reach out under municipal land use laws, send certified regular mail to all the property owners. So that starts this process. But staff is recommending both 2018-15 and 2018-20 be introduced tonight to start the lot-by-lot approval process. And 2018-21 is adding Chapter 2, Section 88, which is development fees. These are the fees that 99% of municipalities, if not 100% municipalities in the state, have already adopted to further affordable housing. The process with this is it gets introduced, and then it will be a few months before it can be eligible for adoption. The city attorney and the consultant and myself have to petition the court to approve this fee. But once the fee is collected, it establishes an affordable housing trust fund, and the city will then be able to recoup dollars for furthering affordable housing. This will be one of the first of many steps as part of the affordable housing plan in the city that staff is proposing for your consideration. This will take a couple months to get adopted before we collect fees, as I said, because the court has to sign off on it. Any questions?
No, but I'm going to ask for something a little bit unusual. Like I said, we're going to do a resolution later, but it's probably going to be at 7:30. But can we read the resolution as far as TEDx and not vote on it now, just so the ladies don't have to sit here till 7:30 and they can hear it? And I guarantee you, it'll be passed five to zero. But Cindy, could you read that? What? Okay, well, you'll hear it twice, though. Do you have it?
I have it.
I don't have a paper copy. Yeah, I do.
The resolution reads, "Resolution declaring May 19, 2018 as TEDx Asbury Park Day. Whereas TEDx Asbury Park is devoted to spreading ideas in the form of short, powerful talks by making great ideas accessible, shining a spotlight on new perspectives, and sparking conversations. And whereas TEDx Asbury Park welcomes people from every discipline and culture who seek a deeper understanding of the world and their local community. And whereas TEDx Asbury Park believes in the power of ideas to change attitudes and lives by giving a voice to the issues that are important to our community. And whereas TEDx Asbury Park is building a clearinghouse of free knowledge from the community's most inspired thinkers to expand our mindset and to help us become better neighbors. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city of Asbury Park that with great pleasure, the city of Asbury Park recognizes TEDx Asbury Park's commitment to the community by helping make great ideas accessible, shining a spotlight on new perspectives and sparking conversation." The city of Asbury Park declares May 19, 2018, TEDx Asbury Park Day. A copy of this resolution will be sent to TEDx Asbury Park event producer.
Thank you.
Matters by the city council?
Okay.
Excuse me.
Thanks. Thanks. Thank you.
We'll see you back at 7:30.
Thank you.
Ready?
Yep.
Okay, so on Friday, May 13th, at 6:30 in the Asbury Park City Council chambers, the Asbury Park Board of Ed is having a special town hall meeting, and everyone is invited to attend and participate. And on Saturday, April 21st, Sustainable Asbury Park and the City of Asbury Park Quality of Life Commission are holding a green expo, recycle, there'll be paper shredding, healthy food, fun for kids, marketplace, plants, healthy living ideas, and more. And that'll be on Saturday, April 21st, from 10:00 to 2:00, right outside in the municipal parking lot. Do you leave anything out? Okay.
On Friday, April 13th, there's going to be a job fair, and it's sponsored by Monmouth County Workforce Development. And it's their spring job fair is going to be at Brookdale on Newman Springs Road, and it's from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00. There are going to be over 140 employers. You don't have to pre-register. Just come, bring your resume, dress professionally, and there are free parking. It's handicapped, accessible, and it's a completely free event. So if you have the opportunity, please take advantage. And also, on this Saturday, former Governor Jim Griebi is going to be in town, and he is going to be talking about the reentry program that helps ex-offenders to return to society with jobs and to help get their lives together. So this is going, he's going to be at St. Steed's Church at 10:00 a.m. in the morning, and it will be followed by our regular expungement program at 11:00 a.m. So, yeah, there are pro-motto counties on hand. It is open to the public, and we'll also be doing voter registration on that day. So please come out. Thank you.
And August 17th, at 6:30 p.m. at the Springwood Avenue Park, Complete Streets will be hosting a bike ride. It's very exciting. Last year, they did it two or three times, and I promised them. So this year, I have to make sure that I have a bike to ride down there. If you don't have a bike, they also have bikes and racks, and we have bikes all over town, but this is special. I believe you start at Springwood Avenue Park, and you go all the way up to, what drive is it, or Fran? And you go down, it's about a good mile. And it's, you get a chance to communicate, talk, and just have a good time riding your bicycle. So we'll bring this back up one more time before August 17th. Hope you attend. Thank you.
Okay, so on the 14th, at Monmouth University is the Made in Monmouth event. You were going to do that, okay? You want to embellish one? Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Every year, the freeholders sponsor an event that focuses and showcases products that are made in Monmouth. It's an opportunity for all kinds of people who come, who have to make their own products, to come and showcase them and sell them. It's an amazing opportunity, and it's an amazing event. It's from 10:00 to 4:00, and one of the highlights of that day for Asbury Park is our jet program, and these are our children who are in the junior entrepreneurial training program, sell their products. So please come out and support our youth. They'll probably be on the second floor. It's two floors of fantastic products. Things you cannot imagine are made right here in Monmouth County. So please come out. It's from 10:00 to 4:00, and it's at the Mac Building. Thank you.
Which is now the Ocean First Bank Center. They changed the name of the building.
Overnight.
In the last few months.
Okay, so on April 19th, a week from tomorrow, is the Rario for Recreation. It's a great event that raises money for all children of Asbury Park to be able to attend our fantastic summer program. Anybody who hasn't bought a ticket, they're still for sale. Ad Journal's probably closed. Donations are accepted. I'd like to just list some of the people that have donated and acknowledge them, and thank them very much, and hopefully more will also contribute. So I'd like to thank Light of Day Foundation, the Chamber of Commerce, Investors Bank, 3141 Seven Days Enterprises, Jersey Shore Running Club, See Here Now, the AP Toy Drive, the Asbury Hotel, Seamount Toe Bus Company, The Stone Pony, Madison Marquette, Asbury Park Press, I Star, Valerio Properties, RentAsburyPark.com, McManmin, Scotland and Baumann, Pepsi Corporation, Sackman Enterprises, Kivit, Johnny Max, Ansel Grim and Aaron, Millennium Corporation, the Berkeley Hotel, Wells Fargo, Serpico Fireworks, Home Drugstore, Chiesa Shanahan and Giattomasi, Acacia Financial, New Jersey Natural Gas, T&amp;M, Valiant Power Company, Archer &amp; Greiner, AP Brewery, the Asbury Park Fishing Club, and there's many more. And...
Victor Boudias.
And Victor Boudias is going to be our photographer that night. So again, it's going to be a great event. It's going to be bigger and better than two years ago. Wells Fargo Stage Coats, regular horses to ride, fireworks, great food, great time, and all profit goes right to the children. So nothing off the top. So that, I deeply appreciate if anybody can attend. And then on Sunday, the 22nd, the Asbury Park Fishing Club is sponsoring their five-yearly carp fishing tournament, which is a great event. It starts early in the morning. You need a license. It's only for deal lake, and you catch as many carp as you can, and you take them down to the flume, and they're weighed, and the most, you get the money for the most. You get the money for the biggest. You get the money for the youngest participant catches the biggest, and it helps the lake because carp are not natural to that lake. So it gets out bad fish that they're hurting the lake. So it's a great event. If anybody can make that, that's on the 22nd. And the prizes, and it closes at 12 o'clock at the flume, and the prizes will be given out then, and you'll be featured by the coaster picture. That's all I have. Thank you.
Matters by the city manager.
We've been informed that Asbury Avenue should have its repaving started on Monday. That's all.
Matters by the city attorney?
I have no matters at this time.
Okay, at this time, we'll take a break until 7:00 p.m. at the regular meeting. Good evening. I'm going to open up the regular meeting of the City of Asbury Park City Council. Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Councilmember Kendall.
President.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Please rise for a silent prayer moment of reflection, please. Flag salute, pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and the Star Ledger on January 4, 2018, and posted on a bulletin board the same day. All notices are on file with the city clerk. At this time, have a motion to open the meeting to the public, please.
Move it.
Second.
Any member who wishes to speak, please come up to the mic, state your name and address for the record, and each member of the public has three minutes to speak.
How you doing? Randy Thompson from Park Avenue, here representing Health Not Handcuffs. Here to talk tonight about the Bradley statue. I think by now you've had a lot of outreaches from us, from our open letter. Everybody has the information in their hand. James A. Bradley, the founder of the City of Asbury Park, was a well-renowned racist. He was a key segregationist in our country. You're going to hear some more stats about how he played segregation laws years before Jim Crow was put into effect. This was not a man who played a passive role. There's some misnomers that he was pushed into a racist position or putting these policies into place because the people at the time didn't want blacks on the boardwalk. That's absolutely ridiculous. That's like saying the shop owner in Nazi Germany who turned in Jews just operated their shop, you know, or the person who owned the plantation had just had to own slaves. This man profited from racially segregating the city in a way that we could still see clearly today. So this man, you know, is certainly unworthy of honor. I feel very passionately as a parent, as a longtime resident here, and I want to say very much, as a white man, I think it's, I need to speak to my other white counterparts that we should be speaking up very vocally about this. And all of a sudden, there's been some suggestions that maybe a descriptive plaque should go in front of it, or that maybe one of his contemporaries should be put near him or in another part of the city. I think those are wonderful ideas. I took cues from listening to people like Muata and other members of the black community that said, you know what, when I live here, when I have to suffer through racism, and I pay my taxes in this town, I shouldn't have to walk smack dab into a statue glorifying the man. And if he was here today, he, with violence, would chase blacks away from the boardwalk, and certainly, two members of the council would never get near the dais. So I don't think this person deserves to stand there. I think this is something the community can get behind as far as, you know, removing this statue in a respectful manner. And then I think the council should commit to doing that and commit to forming a commission representing the diversity of the community to figure out what should go there. It's a predominantly African-American community. There's not one statues of a civil rights leader. We've had amazing civil rights leaders in our history here. We've had amazing civil rights leaders in our history here in this city. And we're not honoring them or what they're going through. And this is a key piece of our culture. So for people who wanna dismiss it, say it's silly, it's not the biggest issue. No, this is a piece of our culture. Just turn on the news and watch how our culture flames up and racism is constantly present to different degrees depending on the day. I think this is something the council should not shy away from, but instead should stand right up like you did in the rally against hate. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Muata Green. I'm a resident of the West Side, a property owner. I'm also a veteran of Vietnam. And I stand here in opposition to, to having that Bradley statue in a public place, which my taxes paid for. I, I, very offensive to me as an African-American person who served this country and have to pay my tax report a racist past. And some people talk about, well, what does the past have to do with now? It's clearly, the past dictates the present. But if you clearly understand racism and white supremacy in this country, you could understand where the economic disparity that happened to black and people of color back in the eighteen hundreds affect us now in the twenty-first century. And a good, for the information with the council members and the mayor, if you even know the history of it, there's a book I refer you to. It's called The Course of Privilege, The History of White Supremacy and Racism in America. In fact, it's written by a white comrade, Chip Smith. So it's very objective historical thing to show you how historically white supremacy and the history of this country has contributed what has happened now. And for people that say, you know, that is not, and even in our community, there's some people that doesn't understand. But most people in America do not understand history. They only look at American history as a fairy tale version of history. History is not a fairy tale. People lived the history. People fought and died for the history. But also, the history is written by the conquerors. History is not written by my people. You only get one month, twenty-nine days, Black History Month. Women get us one month. But the women and people of color, native peoples that have been oppressed by this system, they don't get a chance to write history. So this is about putting history right. And also, I implore Asbury to pride itself as progressive city, the first to pass legislation to say, you know, gay marriage is okay. Progressive's not just one thing. Progressive is everything. If Asbury's gonna take the lead in one thing, it should take the lead in a lot of things that are going on in the city. So we, I implore, like I said, as a veteran and a taxpayer of this city and of this nation, that's what it's about. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Crystal Ramsey Bryant.
Hi, Rita Moreno.
No, no, we, we always, we have some, we have somebody up here speaking. You're next.
My name is Crystal Ramsey Bryant. I'm from Neptune, New Jersey. Um, I'm a student at Brookdale Community College, majoring in social work. And my concern is, um, what is the city doing about the violence that has been going on in the, in the town lately? There's been a lot of violence. Like, I don't have any children in the, in the, in the school system, but I do have some young nieces and nephews that I'm concerned about, you know, just going to the school and what is the city doing about the violence? Thank you.
Michael, do you wanna address that as much as we can?
Well, before Michael say anything, I don't know if you know it, but all over Asbury, the City of Asbury have put up a lot of cameras. And a lot of people in Asbury don't even realize that there is cameras out there. Mostly on the spots where there has been crime. And this has been a, a fast recovery of the people that, that did the crime. So Asbury Park is, uh, is doing something in that respect. Cameras is one of the biggest things that we can have in this town. And it's working for us. City manager, would that on?
One of the things that has been occurring recently, and I can't get into too many details just because of the confidential nature of some of the investigations, much of the crime that we've been seeing, uh, that has been newspaper worthy is happening from people outside of the city coming here. Uh, so our police department has been working with the other police departments to catch the alleged perpetrators. Um, I can't get into too much detail, but they're coming from the region, not just within Monmouth County, to commit these hand attacks. So the police department has stepped up, uh, some patrols. We've been working with the school. But again, we don't wanna give too much information. Um, as the councilman said, we do have cameras located throughout the city in hotspot areas. But the things that you've been seeing in the paper, a lot of it is, ninety-nine percent of it is not inner city. It's, it's coming from outside of the city. And I can't give any more details 'cause there are ongoing investigations. But I can tell you, we have some extraordinary leads on what's going on.
Thank you. Now Rita, now you.
Hi, Rita Moreno, Eighth Avenue. First, I wanted to talk, I wasn't gonna talk about this, but I have to. Randy Thompson and I sat on the commission together for eight months, came late to every meeting and left early. And then in the end, he wrote a sixty-page objection in the history books about the way we acted for eight months and what we came up with.
Okay, Rita, i- if, if you wanna have a conversation with Randy, about Randy, after the council meeting, I think you should address the council with your concerns.
Okay. Well, I wanted to talk about, I'm still talking about the zoning. I know they're working on it. But now the swimming pool is so close to my property line. I think, I researched a few towns. And most of the towns have, when you have a swimming pool, it's usually ten feet away from the property line. This one is five. And now she has to put up a fence and she wants me to take down three trees. I'm not gonna do it. So I don't know if the zoning official has looked at the property or the, the final inspection has come up. But I would like somebody to look at it because I'm not cutting down any trees on my property. They're on my side. So, and, you know, these are the things that you have to look at when you change the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance has to be reviewed. Because this house was built on a lot. She didn't wanna go before the zoning or planning board, so she made it fit on the lot. It's really an oversized house for a little lot. And I think you should really look at things like that, the height of the building. And it's so close to everything. It, it's like she fit everything into this one little lot. And it's not right. I mean, I could put trees. I'm gonna put more trees. But my, she doesn't want my trees 'cause they're gonna, all the leaves are gonna fall in the swimming pool, I guess. So I, I, please, I know, I talked to Barbara. She said they're reviewing the zoning ordinances and they really have to be changed. They're obsolete, most of them. I think everybody should go before the planning board, whether they don't need a variance. This, this lady didn't need a variance 'cause she built the house within. But everybody should go before the planning board to make sure things are gonna look right. This house is so big on the street. And it's a nice house. It's a beautiful house, but it needs a bigger lot. So I'm hoping that, uh, Mr. City Manager, I don't know if you're involved with the zoning ordinances, but I, I hope you'll pay special attention to that. Uh, the other thing is, we need a camera on Eighth Avenue, if there's any extra cameras around. 'Cause we see violations every day. And we see, and, and the out-of-town license plates are getting more and more. So you're gonna have to pay attention to those things. Because now, everybody knows that the out-of-town license plates are from people that, you know, either they're illegal or something's wrong. They, because they have to get New Jersey plates within so many days. So they ride around for months at a time.
Okay, Rita, I'm gonna have to, your time's up. Uh, I think you basically answered your first question yourself, saying that you've talked to Barbara and Barbara has agreed that it meets the zoning requirements. Should we change the zoning? That's something we'll look into. Uh, should we make it where anybody who wants to build a house has to go before zoning and planning? I don't even know if that's legal. So you're throwing questions out there that I don't know the answer to. But we hear you. As far as the out-of-state plates, I agree with you. That's why we put the license plate reading, LSRPs in some of the patrol cars. And they have been doing a good job of picking up, uh, people that shouldn't be here. But it's a tough thing proving. Has somebody been here six months straight? Are they going back and forth? You know, it's not just unique to Asbury Park as far as out-of-state plates. It's unique to New Jersey because of, it's cheaper to get insurance in Maryland. It's cheaper to get insurance in Pennsylvania. So it's something we are looking at, something we are trying to fix. But it's nothing that we can do on the local level to violate something on the state level. And as far as, again, your swimming pool and everything, if it's built within the requirements of five feet to five feet, that's the law. We can't do anything about it.
Well, a resident had her car on the street the other day and she didn't have it registered. And they towed it away real quick and she's a taxpayer.
Okay, that's, I'm gonna ask you, like, your time's up.
Most of these cars aren't registered.
Okay, your time's up, but that's why this license plate reader is so good. Because it, it saves all the paperwork. It nails them right away. Comes back and they're towed within the hour. And a lot of that has been going on, so it has proved successful. We're looking to add to the inventory of license plate readers, but they are not cheap. So we have to budget the money. It is in next year's capital, uh, this year's capital budget, uh, to increase the amount of them. Okay, thank you.
Are all the cameras working?
All the cameras working. For the best of my knowledge, yes.
Reese Murray, sixteen oh four Grand Avenue, address to Asbury Park. Um, couple things. I called the police department to let them know about a parking violation. What's your phone number? And I say to myself, you gotta have my phone number. It comes up automatically. What's your name? I have to go through a list of questions. It gets to the point where I almost say to them, do you want my blood type, too? I give them the address. I tell them the make of the car. Do you know the license plate? Well, now I know, now I have to remember to get the license plate. I tell them it's in front of my house. I'm not home. I'm on my way out. I come back. There is no ticket on the car, all day. Finally, the car takes off. But that's beside the point. I'm telling you, if you make me a meter maid, I can make you a lot of money early in the morning in my neighborhood alone. However, that being said, they don't, I don't know. Nobody comes around. You give them a call. They don't show up. Regarding the statue, I have a question. I grew up here, born and raised here a lot of years ago. In front of the post office on both sides, there used to be, maybe you remember it, John, maybe it was down by then. I don't know. There was a memorial, not a memorial, but they had every person that worked, that, that served in the military, be it white, black, whatever. Every name was listed on both sides. Do you remember it?
Mm-huh.
I don't know where it is. And I strongly feel that our servicemen should get that honor. I don't know where, what they did with it. I don't know who authorized to take it down. But as a little kid, I used to go there and I used to read all the names. Everyone that ever lived in Asbury Park, black, white, made no difference. Their names were on that plaque. I mean, everybody wants to change. The change is okay, but you know what? I liked it when I was growing up. This was a great city to live in. I know things have changed, but I'm also glad I'm on the other side of the moon. 'Cause I don't have to see it all. But anyway, if you can look into that, I'm just curious where that, where that went to. I mean, it was like gorgeous.
Look into it, but, uh...
Yeah.
I'll ask people...
I mean, it would be a nice thing to start up if you can locate the old names.
It, it was common after World War Two that every town basically had one of those. Because I remember like once we moved to Ocean Township, there was one in Ocean Township. And that was taken away. And I had a picture of it. I gave it to the Ocean Township Historical Society. So it was something that was done after, I'm gonna say, the Second World War in most communities. And it did also honor people from the First World War. And then somehow in the, I'm gonna guess, the sixties, they just disappeared from all buildings. And we'll look into it, but...
I was just, I, I was just curious.
I'll ask Bob Stewart to see what they can find out at the library and see if they have a printout on it and if we can research it.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, guys. Uh, my name's Wayne. I'm from Neptune City, New Jersey.
Last name, please.
Oh, sorry, Strobel. Uh, I'm from Neptune City, New Jersey, and I just opened a new business here in town called Beach Box. Uh, our motto is, we wanna build confidence, build strength, and stamina. Burn negativity, burn fat, become our bestseller. Uh, we do this while rewarding all of our members to work out. Uh, we promote small business. So every workout that you come to, you earn points. So we're gamifying your workout. You can then redeem those points at small businesses in town. Um, Kinetics Massage, you can get free massages, Juice Beach Free, Juice and Protein Shake, um, Booster Doo free coffee. And, um, it's a great way to, um, get fit, cop, and everything, and then reward yourself, earn while you burn. We have an app, so all your data gets put into the app. And, um, you can see how many calories you burn. You get your own three-D avatar of yourself. And, um, we hopefully have a really cool outside structure coming, um, where we can actually work out outside. So, and it promotes knockout bowling. So we're in three hundred schools right now throughout New Jersey. Kids are designing, um, gloves. And you can actually build online right now at Garden City Quality. We're actually gonna make those gloves of one lucky student. And all the proceeds will go to, um, anti-carcine campaigns. And whoever purchases one of those gloves actually gets a complimentary month as well at Beach Box. So, um, come check us out. Um, you can download our app.
What's the address again?
Thirteen seventeen Memorial Drive, right next to Booster Doo. So, um, it's super awesome. Just come check it out. That's all I have. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Uh, before the next speaker, I would like to invite you to a recreation meeting. I'll get in touch with you and you could just see what, we'll see what we can do to help you.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Okay, all right.
Hi, my name's Deirdre Medkaff. Um, I'm, I'm from Rumson, um, but my family and I have been long residents of Monmouth County for a long time. I come, first of all, I wanna answer the question about the stat, the, the war statue. I believe that Bill Bradley, uh, sorry, James Bradley, um, actually had that erected, um, years ago. And it was for, uh, it was for the Civil War and it was removed because it was deteriorating.
The post office was, wasn't built when Bradley was alive. She... What you're talking about, you're, you're probably talking about something that actually happened. And I'm sorry, I'll give you extra time. But what Louise is talking about is what was at this post office and this post office was built in the nineteen twenties. So it wasn't, what you're talking about is two different objects. I, I'm sorry I interrupted you.
That's okay. Um, I, um, I'm coming to you, um, I work with Help Not Handcuffs, but I'm actually coming as a, um, I'm at, uh, I'm getting my master's in social work at Monmouth University. And, um, I'm, I look at the statue and I first got involved, I was like many people who thought, okay, it's just a statue. It's history. We can't erase history. But then when I researched it and when I spoke to the residents at the rally and I heard what they said, it's not history, it's present. These peo- this community lived through the segregation. It wasn't that long ago that this community was segregated. I remember growing up in Boston, the buses and all of that. It wasn't that long ago. It's not history. It's present. And, um, I, um, we've handed out, and I'm not gonna go over it because it would take too much time, but I ask you to look at the history of the policies that Bradley put into place and how it corresponded with the end of the Civil War, the ratification of the Thirteenth Amendment. Within seven years, he put in segregationist policies before the Jim Crow laws, twenty years before the Jim Crow laws were legally enforced by the Supreme Court under Plessy versus Ferguson. So I ask you to look at that. But as a social wor- as a social worker candidate, I also have to draw your attention to the fact that this statue is a form of passive racism that exists every single time a person views it. It reminds them of what they have had to endure and what their families, what their parents, what their grandparents, segregation, slavery. It's very, very prominent in their memories and in their experiences. And this is a form of microaggression and it causes racism trauma, which is acknowledged in the DSM-Five. And it causes health complications and it impacts this community severely. And I... And it causes health complications, and it impacts this community severely. And I implore with you that you strongly consider removing it because it is, it does, is, impacts a large percentage of your population negatively. And I'm very nervous, and thank you.
Thank you. Rita, your time is up. Rita, 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 you're getting very close. It'd be the first time in fifty years that you've been removed from the council chair. Rita, the girl has every right to speak, and I'm going to let her speak, and she sat very patiently while you spoke and didn't interrupt you. So please do not interrupt any more speakers. It's very rude, and it's not like you. So please.
How you doing? My name is Darrell Bailey. I live at twelve twenty-four Martha Avenue, Asbury Park. I came here to talk about changing the Bradley statue. I think to get along with racial harmony and the social harmony we're trying to provide in Asbury Park, this thing has to come down. I met Mayor Bradley about fifteen years ago. I was doing my house. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you how I met him. I was, I did demolition of my house and taking down some walls, and there was a calendar, and it was Mayor Bradley. And he said, man, we got something here, you know? It was just like nineteen twenty-one, you know? It was like May, something like that, whatever, you know? It was all like, the people was, you know, brittle, you know? So we took it, me and the kids, you know, decided to research. It was fall, and I found out what he represented, you know? I had intentions on giving it to Asbury before, you know, I found out what he represented. And, you know, we took him out on fire, you know, in the backyard, and that's what happened to the calendar. Same thing should happen to this statue. I mean, we don't need this. We don't need this here. We don't need this, what we tried to represent in Asbury. The things that's going on in Asbury, the beach, you know, Cook Avenue, making great changes, you know? Any interracial relationships we have in, you know, the gay community, Dintay Bradley doesn't go on here.
Thank you. Motion to close.
We'll move on to minutes. We have three sets of minutes tonight. Executive session minutes on March twenty-eighth, workshop minutes on March twenty-eighth, and regular session minutes on March twenty-eighth. Have a motion to approve the minutes, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
And Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Move on to adoption of two thousand and eighteen budget. I believe it's a recommendation of staff to table the resolution two thousand and eighteen one forty-one, adoption of two thousand and eighteen budget. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn? Mayor Moore?
Yes.
This will be rescheduled for the April twenty-fifth council meeting. We have the consent agenda. Resolution two thousand and eighteen one forty-two, resolution approving special event applications. Two thousand and eighteen dash one forty-three, resolution approving the appointment of the City of Asbury Park Green Team. The member being appointed is Kayvon Paul. Resolution two thousand and eighteen dash one forty-four, resolution authorizing the cancellation of refunds of tax sales certificate, erroneously sold with an active municipal lien, six oh four dash nine, fourth nine oh three Madison Avenue. Resolution two thousand and eighteen dash one forty-five, resolution approving the award of contract for regional contribution agreement for eleven oh two Sunset Avenue. Resolution two thousand and eighteen dash one forty-six, resolution approving award of contract for regional contribution agreement, this is for ten ten Sunset Avenue. And resolution two thousand and eighteen one forty-seven, resolution approving the two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and eighteen alcohol beverage control license for Six Gear Enterprises LLC in the City of Asbury Park. Does anybody wish any of these items to be removed from the consent agenda? If not, can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Just a question, no biggie. On two oh eight dash one forty-six, third paragraph down, there's a typo in there where you have it going to the wrong person.
I did make that correction during the break. Thank you, though.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
It's a regular individual resolutions, resolution two thousand and eighteen one thirty-seven. This is a resolution of the mayor and council of the City of Asbury Park acting as the waterfront redevelopment entity, granting conceptual approvals for amendments to the Asbury Leans project on block forty-one oh four, lot nine, two oh nine, Fourth Avenue, and referral to the Asbury Park Planning Board. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand and eighteen one forty-eight, resolution approving payment of bills. Councilmember Chapman abstains from purchase order eighteen dash zero zero three seven four. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Resolution two thousand and eighteen dash one forty-nine, resolution of reappointment Cindy A. Dy to the position of municipal clerk and establishment of tenure. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yeah, we should all pause.
Yes. Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution two thousand and eighteen dash one fifty, resolution authorizing change order number five for Springwood Avenue Park. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand and eighteen dash one fifty-one, resolution authorizing change order number seven for Springwood Avenue Park Professional Services. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand and eighteen dash one fifty-two, resolution of the mayor of the city and the city council of the City of Asbury Park, designating Interfaith Neighbors Inc. as a redevelopment parcel known as twelve seventy-six Washington Avenue in Washington Avenue redevelopment area and approving redevelopment agreement between the city and Interfaith. This is also being recommended.
Motion to the table.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand and eighteen dash one fifty-three, resolution declaring May nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, as Ted X Asbury Park Day. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to ordinances.
Before we do introduction ordinances, and I think I ran to the bathroom, but I just wanted to acknowledge our appointment to the City of Asbury Park Green Team, Kayvon, if you just want to stand up. It was on our consent agenda because we were all clearly voting yes. So just a way, like, go ahead.
We're on to introduction ordinance, two thousand and eighteen dash fifteen, adoption of amendment of the waterfront redevelopment plan. Can I have a motion to introduce, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
And this ordinance is scheduled for adoption for May ninth, two thousand and eighteen. Resolution two thousand and eighteen dash twenty, amendment number one to an ordinance of the City of Asbury Park and a county in Monmouth, New Jersey, providing for special assessments of the cost of certain waterfront, oh, I'm sorry, wastewater, stormwater, roadway, street skate, utility and other infrastructure improvements, portion of the prime renewal area of the boardwalk area within the Asbury Park waterfront redevelopment area, and establishment of a mechanism for payment of the cost thereof. Can I have a motion for introduction, please? May I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand and eighteen dash twenty-one, an ordinance of the City of Asbury Park, County of Monmouth State of New Jersey, adding chapter two, section eighty-eight, development fees to the code of the City of Asbury Park. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
This ordinance, public hearing will be held on May ninth, two thousand and eighteen. And if I forgot to say this, so was two thousand and eighteen twenty. That's also May ninth, two thousand and eighteen. We're on to second reading, ordinance two thousand and eighteen dash fourteen, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cat bank per NJSA forty-eight, colon, four dash forty-five point fourteen. Have a motion to adopt this ordinance, please?
Move it.
I'm sorry, can I have a motion to open this ordinance to the public, please?
Move it.
Second. Motion to close.
Move it.
Second.
Motion to adopt, please?
Move it.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
No other business. Motion to adjourn, please?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.